I would like to call the Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 23rd, 2011, to order. And at this time, would you please all rise and I will lead you in the invocation.
Amen. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl?
Here.
Commissioner Letschka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Vito?
Present, right here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Way? Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
A motion, support.
I have a motion and support. Any changes? Commissioner Vito?
Yes, I'd like to add, under new business, a 15B, and that would be a motion to repeal Resolution 7-11 dot 19 to opt out of the proposed amendment to the tax increment financing and development for the local development of finance authority.
Thank you. Any other items to be added to the agenda? Seeing none? All in favor of the agenda? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. We have no awards and recognition. Communications and petitions, you have all in front of you a pencil and a pad of paper from the uppergrandriver.org. That is for your use. We have no special orders or public hearings. At this time, we've arrived at the first opportunity for the public to address us. Please step up to the microphone, identify yourself, and five minutes at this time.
My name is Emily Huey. I live on Dan Street out in Blackman Township. And we are here asking if we can get a speed limit sign posted in our neighborhood. Right now, there's none. We come off of M-50 going 55 to Clinton Way, which is 35. And then we have, in that, when you turn right on to Dan Street, it's probably a half a mile long, approximately 35 children, aging from 2 to 15. And people fly down there. Nothing's posted, maybe people don't realize it's 25 there. But if we could get something posted, or even a kid at play sign, or just something refreshing people's memory, you're now in a residential area. I have the two-year-old. We've had a lot of close calls. I even have the, I went Sam's and bought the little guy that says kids at play. I'm hoping that I'm at the right place, this is where I'm supposed to come to ask this question. I was told by Blackman Township.
So you understand, public comment, the board doesn't respond directly to you, ma'am. We have a couple gentlemen in the room who are making notes right now, and I'm sure they'll meet with you right afterwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rather than approving as part of the consent agenda, it should be expected that this commission discuss and debate the merits or lack thereof on whether or not to apply for the Community Transformation Grant. This grant was created out of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare. If approved, this grant would be used for programs aimed at reducing smoking and obesity. According to the Building Healthy Communities Project, which is currently funded by the county's Health Department, this grant money would cover the same objectives already in place to reduce smoking and obesity at the county level, and already being paid for with our local tax dollars. According to Commissioner Williams, this commission should also approve as part of the consent agenda without discussion or debate, a county allegiance partnership that would also enhance the county's efforts to address smoking cessation and obesity. Per Commissioner Williams, quote, "If we're serious about tackling it in a proactive rather than a reactive manner, then our partnership makes sense," end quote. If Commissioner Williams believes more government intervention and spending is being proactive and partnering with allegiance is the best route to take, then exactly who will be held accountable for the previous tax dollars already spent on the smoking and obesity reduction programs administered by our own county health department? Or will the commissioners continue funding redundant healthier lifestyle programs that have not and will not produce the results expected? If the Community Transformation Grant is approved, the county will be required to provide a hard match in the years three through five. Can any county commissioner or the county administrator explain how much the hard match will cost the county in years three through five? If this county commission is serious about reducing spending at the local, state, and federal levels, this commission should deny Commissioner Williams' request to spend federal tax dollars on programs that are neither affordable or needed since smoking and obesity reduction programs already exist at the county level. Thank you.
My name is Mark Muich. I reside in Summit Township. If it's not too late, I would like to deliver to the clerk two documents here.
Motion to receive, please. You have a motion and support? All in favor? Opposed? Duly carried.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about the City of Jackson stormwater fee and the County of Jackson's suit against that stormwater fee. These two documents that I just presented to you, I think, if you will take the opportunity to look at them, will clarify the situation to some degree. The city is under a federal mandate to clean up the stormwater that's going into the Grand River. That costs the city about $700,000. That's right off the top. It's a federal mandate. They don't have any choice in the matter. If they don't, if they can't raise the money, then they're going to have to reduce their expenditures on streets and whatnot. I understand that there seems to be some debate whether this is a fee or a tax. Nobody really likes taxes, especially in this economic environment. But I would like to remind you that in many cities across Michigan and in hundreds of cities across the United States, these sorts of stormwater fees have been enacted for over 30 years. They've raised millions of dollars. They've helped millions and millions of citizens in those cities, and they've improved the water quality of the adjacent rivers and lakes. The reason this isn't a tax, but it is a fee, is because it's paid for by users. It's just like your water bill, it's just like your sewer bill. People don't vote on that, they pay for what they use. If the county, which is liable for about $32,000, would instead of spending the money you're going to spend on this lawsuit and make the city spend $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, if you would take that money and improve the water quality of your own properties such as a fairground, we'd be a lot way further down the road in creating a cleaner Grand River. So I know that you voted on this already, but I would strongly encourage you to delay filing your lawsuit against the city. I noticed on your website, in the very center, the top of your website, it says collaboration. I have a feeling that we've missed the opportunity to collaborate both with the environmental movement. I know that I didn't know anything about it, and I'm sort of representative of the Sierra Club here. I know that the Water Conservation District didn't know anything about this legal matter. The Drain Commissioner, I don't believe, was consulted. So I would ask you to just take a little more time to do your studies. Look at some of the things that I've sent to you. There's pages and pages of bibliography about the benefits of municipal stormwater fees that I presented to you. And if you'll delay this, I'm sure that you can find some collaborative people with the city and the environmental movement. Thank you very much.
Anyone else under public comment? Anyone else under public comment? Public comment is now closed. Special meetings of standing committees, there are none. Minutes of the 7:08 and 8:15, and the special 7:19 regular meetings of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. The minutes are attached. Need a motion, please, to approve?
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any corrections, deletions, or additions? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Duly carried. We now have arrived at the consent agenda. Have a motion for the consent agenda? I have a motion and support. Commissioner Duckham?
I would like Item 6, pulled from consent agenda for discussion. That would be the Community Transformation Grant.
Move it to your area. It will go to become Item 13C1, under Human Services, for a separate item. Any other items to come off the consent agenda? Commissioner Williams?
I'd like to remove C5 for discussion.
That'll move to 13C also, and become Item 2. Any other items from the consent agenda? Let's use our lights to vote on the consent agenda, please. The consent agenda has passed at this time. Standing committees, county policies chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing committees, county affairs and agencies, chaired by Commissioner Dave Letschka. Commissioner Letschka?
Tonight, we have two appointments. One public member to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Committee forwards the name Thomas Trent Harris.
We have a motion and support. Any other nominations from the floor? Commissioner Williams?
Nominate race now, please.
Seeing none, we'll proceed to ballot. Madam Clerk?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl? Commissioner Letschka? Commissioner Rice?
Harris.
Commissioner Duckham?
Snell.
Commissioner Alexander?
Mr. Harris.
Commissioner Vito?
Harris.
Mr. Williams?
Snell.
Commissioner Smith?
Harris.
Commissioner Elwell?
Snell.
Chairman Shatwell?
Harris.
Harris wins.
Well, Mr. Harris won with seven votes. Commissioner Letschka?
Next item is one public member to finish the unexpired term of John Hurd at the Road Commission, and the committee forwards his name Jeffrey Cruz.
Any other nominations from the floor? Commissioner Williams?
City Councilmember John Plachek.
He realizes that he has to resign his seat upon appointment, does he not?
It's a nonpartisan position on the city council, so I'm not sure if he would have to resign that seat or not.
It was our understanding that if you serve on that, whether partisan or nonpartisan, you're asked to resign according to the statute.
Well, Mr. Plachek approached me. My assumption is he'd be aware of that, and I assume he'd still like to go forward.
Commissioner Alexander?
I would like to nominate Spring Arbor resident Mr. Walter Davis.
Any other nominations from the floor? Madam Clerk, please proceed to ballot.
And Plachek.
Jeff Cruz is one with seven votes. Commissioner Letschka?
At this time, we've arrived at Human Services. We have two items. Commissioner Jonathan Williams is chairman. Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I remember one was the authorize a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners for the Jackson County Health Department to be an implementation site in year one of the MDCH Community Transformation Grant. The full board, excuse me, the full committee made the motion to pass this up to the board, and at the request of Ted Westmeyer, our chair of the Health Department, based on what we had discussed at the meeting, and there was some discussion at the meeting, and I had frank discussions with Ted, we recognize that the federal government doesn't have the dollars to spend on these types of programs. But if the federal government's going to be spending our money, our kids' money, and the money from the community, we should be aggressive in the grant process. Really, the problem lies, relies with the federal government spending the dollars it doesn't have. But at the end of the day, as some individuals have pointed out, we have individuals in this community already paying for these, and then being put on the hook for these secession programs for obesity and smoking, and then being put on the hook by the federal government to fund other communities and doing this. And it seems that the prudent move forward would be to seek out those grant dollars and protect the taxpayers of Jackson County until the federal government gets wise to this process and stops spending the dollars it doesn't have.
Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Williams, if I can direct the question to you, there was a concern raised about the ongoing hard cost. I think something mentioned about years three through five. Can you speak to that, if it's regarding this grant?
It is regarding this grant. The process in place has Ted seeking for support from the Board of Commissioners to be a part of this implementation site. He was going to return with information as it was made available, but the timing needed to get the support, if it was indeed going to come, at this full board meeting versus waiting until knowing exactly what the match would be. Years one and two would be, of course, no match. The additional years may be a match.
If I can add just a little bit of additional, and I apologize, I don't serve on Human Services, and I did not attend. If we approve this, are we then locked into completing a full five-year program? Or if we decide we want to back out after the first year, are we allowed to do that? You know, and maybe if there's any question, you can't answer Ted's here, I think, maybe.
Chair would recognize, Director Westmeyer?
Good evening. This Community Transformation Grant is a result of the state applying for these funds for all of the state. That does not include counties greater than a half a million in population. Counties greater than a half a million in population were able to apply for these grant funds separately. However, counties less than a half a million would be bundled into a statewide grant proposal that has been submitted by the state. Now, we have no idea whether we're going to receive these funds or not. The goals of this program align perfectly with the priorities that have been outlined under our Healthy Communities strategic goals with tobacco, with diet and exercise, with heart disease and those issues. So the information I have is basically limited to the letter that you have in your packet. We were told that we really needed to have a fast turnaround on a letter of support at the beginning of September, when the state were, if the state were to find out if they received these funds. It would be the intent of the state for us to be in a five-year program, because many of these things are going to be ongoing projects, programs, and many of these are behavioral changes. So I cannot give you an exact amount. I do not have that from the state right now as far as hard match, but typically, you're probably talking to maybe a 10% or 20% of the total amount.
Okay. If I can, two more questions. You talk about a hard timeline. The date that's in here says, if you're not interested, please notify us by June 27th. I think we're beyond that, unless we're talking about 2012.
We were notified early on, we have about a week to turn it around, saying that we had an interest in this. However, it said if the state were to receive those funds, that we would have to provide a letter of support early in September. And I wasn't sure that we could have provided that any, we couldn't get through the process in time enough before that, so.
So Ted, if we approve this, this is just being grouped in with those other counties for that initial part of it? It doesn't necessarily obligate us to running this program? Is that accurate?
No, that's correct.
So we can choose to opt out later if we want to?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do serve on the Human Services Committee, and I would just like to add that, and I certainly listened to what Mr. Wilson had to say. And Director Westmeyer did make some good points. This is something that directly is associated with our strategic plan as far as a healthy community. Yes, we have to be concerned with spending taxpayer dollars. I totally agree with that. On the other hand, this does address, again, you know, tobacco use. It does address healthy living and prevention. And if there's a possibility at all of reducing those in this county, obviously, if you reduce those, you're going to reduce spending taxpayer dollars by a whole lot more than if you do nothing. So that's one of the reasons why I supported this and asked for this to be moved on as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that smoking cessation and obesity cessation is a personal responsibility. I don't believe the federal government has any right or responsibility of getting involved with this. I just wish to stay as far away from Obamacare money as possible. This is a situation where, let's just go ahead and pass it, then we'll see what's in it. Sounds just about like what happened in Washington. Pass the bill, then you can see what's in it. I will not support accepting Obamacare grant money for the Community Transformation Grant. I realize that it's, quote, "free" money, but it's still federal money, of which 40% of it is borrowed. I would urge Jackson County to return the money if we get it to Washington, while it's only symbolic. If the federal government cannot balance their budget, they need to be put on notice that somebody down here at Grassroots Roots level cares about balancing the budget. And maybe we get a movement started and assist the federal government in something that they don't seem to be able to do. Let's return the money to the Chinese and quit borrowing it. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Passed eight to two. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other item that was pulled from the consent agenda was the authorize the Health Department to provide medical direction by utilizing both Dr. Amy Schultz, eight hours a week, through a contractual agreement with Allegiance Health, and Dr. Donald Lawrencechuk, eight hours a week, through an amended contractual agreement with Livingston County. Again, the full Human Services Board passed this up for consideration to the full board based upon the discussion that we had with Ted Westmeyer regarding state mandates that have come down that have basically said, we're out of compliance and we need to add additional hours. This was something that Ted had worked out with Dr. Schultz and Allegiance, and it makes sense based upon our efforts through the county to, you know, to work on the strategic focus vision of strategy of the healthy community. With that, I think, Ted, if you could come up just a real quick question, if you could give an overview of this and what the state has done to put us in a situation where we're moving this way.
Well, if you remember, well, if I could do a little history, maybe for those that haven't heard this discussion before. The State of Michigan used to have in their rules and regulations for a medical director that you had to have a full-time medical director if your county was in excess of 150,000 in population. This seemed to be unrealistic. I think everyone understood that unrealism involved in this, and so it was never enforced. However, there were counties that started to push the envelope a little too much and were getting medical directors that really did not have knowledge of public health and were lessening those hours. So a few years ago, the state convened a work group made up of local public health and state officials, and they decided to support rules which would specify qualifications for a medical director and a public health department, and also mandate hours, how many hours we need. Those rules were passed in May of this year. It stipulates those minimum requirements, which mean preventive medicine or masters of public health, as well as an MD or a DO. It also specifies that if you serve a population up to 250,000, you can have, you have to have a minimum of at least 16 hours of medical direction. If you serve a population greater than 250,000, then you would need a full-time medical director, and they specified that as 32 hours. Currently, with our arrangement with Livingston County, we are getting 12 hours of medical direction, and therefore, we have to, in order to comply with the rules and regulations of the state, have to increase it by four more hours. What I am proposing is to split that down the middle with having Dr. Lawrencechuk have eight hours by modifying the contract with Livingston County, then also an arrangement with Dr. Amy Schultz for an additional eight hours. One of the reasons... One of the reasons that I am recommending this is because we have an excellent medical director in Dr. Lawrencechuk, very, very knowledgeable of our mandated programs and our typical programs that we've operated in the past. However, Dr. Schultz also brings with her, besides the minimum requirements, the minimum educational qualifications, extreme heavy involvement with the health improvement organization with our... which we have joined, targeting those high-risk factors, and would be an excellent asset to our department to assist us in moving toward dealing with some of those primary health risks, and also having stronger ties to our local medical community. So we are under an obligation to have 16 hours of medical direction, whether that be you have to have the qualified person, and you have to have the 16 hours. I'm recommending that we split it, because I think we could have two strong individuals and comply. The cost would be the same whether we just have one physician or whether we have two.
Thank you.
Questions of Commissioners? Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make the motion that we pass this authorization.
Support.
We have a motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Commissioner Williams, I beg your pardon. I need to go back to the first item. I apologize for not returning to you and asking for a motion on the first item. I would ask that we revote on the first item under the Health Department, and you please conduct that, if you could, please.
I'd make a motion that we authorize a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners for the Jackson County Health Department to be an implementation site near one of the MDCH Community Transformation Grant.
We have a motion and support from Commissioner Vidito. Again, let's use our lights to vote, please. The motion under the... has passed nine to one. Commissioner Williams?
No further items to come before the spread, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now have arrived at unfinished business, seeing the board has none at this time, and none to come from the Board of Commissioners. At new business, approval of Commissioner Mahoney, request for MAC approval to attend the MAC conference. Entertain a motion, please. Seeing none, there will be no action taken on the item. We're now at Item 15B, repeal of Resolution 07-11.19. I need a motion, please?
Don't move.
I have a motion. I have support from Commissioner Rice. We use our lights to vote. If there's no questions from Commissioners, seeing none? Motion to repeal, passed 10-0. We've now returned to public comment. It's your second time to speak. You have three minutes. If you'd like to address the Board of Commissioners, please do. We will be going into a closed session after this, and I do not know if we'll be coming out to take action or not afterwards. So just to make you aware, the discussion will be on labor negotiations. So, public comment first. Anyone for public comment? Seeing none, the second round of public comment is now closed. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss union negotiation parameters. Motion and support? All in favor? Opposed? Duly carried.
As to why we pass things up to the board. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurl?
I'd like to thank everybody for the cards and the phone calls and emails that I received. Well, kind of less than what I got into, so if you know somebody that smokes, tell them to quit.
Any other Commissioner comments? We are adjourned.